Something like that.
I played something along that.
I was playing.
Me, that's pretty good considering how bad I've been.
I was playing terrible at sundown on Saturday. Well, it was just like, well, it was nice, but it was wet, the ground. Child on the TV, second job, you get 20 feet, I just go back and chuck it in it, you know? And then there was a three buck every single time, you know, it was just like, it's so frustrating. Where you get to the green and two every time and then you just can't.
Okay. Everyone can rise.
Let's allegiance to the light of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Uh, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. So we'll start off with the roll call, uh, roll call, trustee Briggs. Uh, trustee Ellis.
President.
Deputy Mayor Younger.
President.
And, uh, trustee Nadya is absent with notice. Um, we'll jump right in and just start with the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the April 24th, uh, special board meeting minutes?
Thank you.
Uh, open the discussion, any concerns? Uh, all favorites tonight? Uh, can I have a motion to approve the April 28th, 2025 board meeting minutes?
Thank you.
All in favor? Uh, can I have a motion to approve the May 1st, 2025, uh, special board meeting minutes?
Welcome.
Thanks.
All in favor? Open it up to petitioners and correspondents, is anyone here, uh, that would like to speak to the board on any matter? John, come on. If you can, just state your full name.
Hello, my name is John Vigola. Um, I'm here to follow up about the joint coalition cleanup. I wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Briggs and Commissioner Ellis, uh, for your hard work. Thank you for coming and picking up trash and thank you for taking the trash. Uh, together, we did an excellent job, we picked up a total of 11 bags of trash. That was, uh, six bags of rubbish and five bags of recycling. Uh, and we had 26 volunteers. To, uh, give a little, um, reference, there was, uh, 50 bags the first year, 26 bags the second year, and this year we had 11, so, together, we're all doing a great job.
Thanks, thanks for coordinating, organizing.
Thanks for 11, is that it?
Okay. Um, is anyone else here?
Uh, we have just, uh, one last reminder, Ruck the Win, uh, 42nd Annual Ruck the Win 5K, uh, this coming Sunday. Uh, I had been in touch with Chief Bill last week, we met, um, we had a last meeting this Thursday. I invited Chief and some other people down for, um, T2 should be there, just to make sure to go over just one final walkthrough. Uh, wrapping letters going out to the businesses and churches that could be affected by it to just, you know, uh, see to seek alternate routes, plan accordingly. Uh, but, uh, we're ahead of tickets on schedule and so far, so good, no rain. So, uh, just wanted to update everyone and appreciate the support and, uh, hopefully this makes it through the paper as another shout out. Appreciate it.
Uh, would anybody else like to speak to the board? Assistant Paul.
Francis Rowley. So I got a couple of things. Taxes got raised.
Sure.
Um, everything. What is the village going to do for the people that live in the village? Um, one thing I remember is you had, a couple of meetings ago, you were talking about Elmville being like, uh, the town of Montgomery or the village of Montgomery in some sort of way. Well, the village of Montgomery and the town of Montgomery, they have municipal pickup where people can leave their trash out on the side of the road and it gets picked up by the municipal workers and the tires, stuff like that. Maybe that's something that would help some of these homes along the way that look like real bad. They're, they're in, they're in real bad shape, Ethan has Dan. There's some houses that are just horrible, tires, uh, TVs, couches, couch, I mean, couches get left all over the place. Um, another thing, like, you're asking a lot on the fact that the taxpayer is in the village, but you give us municipal water. Okay, you give us the police department. Okay. I mean, and this isn't a shot at the cops, but the cops should be making their own paycheck in a way. They should be writing tickets, so when they write the tickets, they get paid off of that, you know, going to the courts. We no longer have the village courts, so you're not getting no money from writing tickets. Am I correct, Phil?
Oh, we're not allowed to write tickets to payroll.
No, no, what I'm saying is you guys should.
Because if that's the case, I'm going out and rent the house.
You know what I mean, but you know what I mean, like, there should be a way that you guys.
There's a revenue. There is a revenue generated from traffic tickets.
Yeah.
It depends on how the courts, uh, dispose of them, if they dispose of them, if they dispose of them on a state, uh, plea and the state gets.
Well, oh, okay, which is understandable in the same sense. There's, there's no, you know, we're paying the cop salaries and, you know, I get it. At the same sense, but we're not, you know, we're not getting anything. We can't even get the street sweeper to go down some of the streets in the village. It's like they stick to Canal, Maple, and maybe Center. You know? When are, when are the other streets? There's other taxpayers that live in this village that would probably like to see the street sweeper come down their street and clean their street. Sorry to have to like feel like I'm beating you guys up in a way, but like, there's, there's to a point where 7% taxes get raised. I mean, that's a lot, I had to get a second job so I can help out with the, the, the percentage on the taxes. Yeah, I don't, I didn't want to have to, but I had to. It's a lot of money for some people, especially if they're on fixed incomes. You know? So maybe it's dark, maybe it's time we start cutting some stuff in the village.
Sure.
You know, in, in all honesty, there, there, there should be a conversation, what needs to be cut in the village?
Sure, so, you know, and, and just to kind of go through a couple of points, you know, definitely street sweeping on the secondary streets. We'll talk to the street department, see, you know, what their rotation is right now, see how that can be improved, totally understand that. You know, and to go back to the point of like the town of Montgomery, the village of Montgomery, again, I know I spoke about them, I, I speak to them just simply to get them familiar with them.
Which I get, yeah.
Um, but, you know, and this is one of the points that I think during the budget meeting though, is like using the village of Montgomery as an example, on a per person basis, their taxes are incredibly high. You know, that, that like pickup schedule, they have, I believe, village trash pickup.
It's, it's in their taxes.
But it's all cost, right?
No, yeah, which is the goal, I understand, yeah.
And that's, that's the duality of it, it's like, you know, when we, when we talk about comparables, it has to be on per service basis because, you know, their budget without debt is probably 30% higher than ours, if not more. Uh, and again, probably even higher now that they have 80% taxing for instance past year.
Mm-hmm.
Town of Montgomery didn't do much better. Their taxes are incredible, I mean, it's not Westchester or Rockland, but Orange County.
It's high.
The villages are incredibly high. I get the frustration, you know, to your point though, this past year certainly, we did cut, you know, police spending from payroll standpoint was down almost 20%, street spending was down 18%. And there were other areas where basically 2023, 2024, little village ran an almost $700,000 deficit. Some of that was because of our revenue shortfall, some of that was just simply because it went over budget. And so we decreased it year over year by $450,000, which is tough, because that's, I mean, any organization, once it starts contracting, they don't do it well. And, you know, that could be a business, that could be a municipality. And so this year is basically trying to just sweep fine, again, you know, and I get, you know, you want more for what you're paying more for, and it's just up in an inflationary environment when material costs are going up, tens of percent, you know, uh, benefit costs are increasing, healthcare costs in general, public or private sector. And that's this conundrum that we find ourselves in that, you know, we have a 2% tax gap, but everything is going up.
Well, yeah, which I under, I understand that.
But I, but to your point, right, at the end of the day, the purpose of the village is to serve and you will certainly look into different ways that even with our constrained budget, that we can provide better service for the villagers.
One thing, the, the quality of water, and I know we spoke about this, but there's, I live over on Orange Street, early in the morning.
Yeah.
The water smells horrible and late at night, probably midnight from, from midnight to like four or five. I get up at four thirty, just get ready for work.
Is it a sulfur smell or chlorine smell?
It's a chlorine smell, it's a high, it's a high coordination smell.
So, you know, I, I know you mentioned it before, again, do you mind if we?
I said, yeah, I said to you, drop it, drop it off, you can, you can do what you need to. Okay. But on one last note, thank you for what you guys did at 18 more, I do appreciate it.
Sure.
Very well done, thank you.
Good.
And thank you again.
Okay, uh, is anyone else here to see the board tonight? Okay, uh, so we'll move on to the, uh, discussion item, uh, which is rail trail regulations, kind of got brought up a few times over the last, I want to say six months, uh, the town had adopted, uh, a local law back in November, I believe, uh, just defining some regulations for the rail trail. Um, it had been proposed that we potentially adopt a, basically a word for word, um, local law and the exact same thing. Uh, one of the things that, uh, Ian noted is that we don't even have any general parks regulations. Uh, so this might be an opportunity to just simply create a chapter in village law, uh, that would just be parks. We'd basically just adopt, uh, rail trail regulations, but also they have a, they have a quick word specific to like motor vehicle usage in parks. That is the Article One, um, that defines, you know, use an ATV, use, uh, you know, whatever the, uh.
Does the town have something like that on, on there?
Exactly.
That we could just reference.
Yeah, so, and, and so I didn't attach it, I, I heard it was only today that when I was emailing Ian that he brought that up. And so Article One is basically that whole word that we're speaking about, and I would agree, I think maybe we should just adopt that.
Got it.
And then we can start maybe parsing out some other regulations we might want to apply that are specifically our parks down the road. Um, so what I'd like to do, Ian, without, I mean, can we set a public hearing to adopt this language? Or should we normalize the local law first, ahead of the public hearing? I mean.
So typically, you can set the public hearing.
Yes.
The local law needs to be created prior to the, the actual public hearing, so that we have something to look at in front of your vote.
Of course.
The only thing I would say though is, um, that law already applies to all parks in the village, because the parks are within the town of Orson. So it's just something to keep in mind.
Okay.
Now, you could just have a specific law which deals with the penalties.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, so, I mean, it makes sense, because right, yeah, you're absolutely right, it's within the same jurisdictional bounds. I wonder though, if it would just be proven to do it simply because then we could, if there's maybe lax enforcement, uh, that we could choose to then enforce it at least on our portion of the road.
We can enforce it on our end.
Like, even as a town.
The police or the building department could write anyone a, a ticket under the town of Orson code. The same way the police can enforce New York State code, they can force village code, they can enforce town code.
Okay.
So I mean, they could, I mean, the only real purpose behind it is, one, you know, the, the penalties we discussed are not as severe as maybe we would like them to be, they're a little too low.
Sure.
A $50 ticket isn't going to tell anyone to stop riding an ATV through the pot of pressure. Uh, so that would be ended too, if you see that they're somewhat lenient, you could make them more restrictive on the parks of the village. Um, but just to just adopt the same exact language, I think that that's kind of redundant, if the law already applies. Um, sorry, we're losing.
No, I didn't, yeah, like, and I didn't really know, because that was one of the issues that was brought up in parks before, that the motor vehicles weren't going on the town side, that they were coming on the village side, not, not putting common sense for the moment together, and it's still the town.
Right.
Orson, that it's.
Yeah, I know, because we, we tend to think of them as separate entities, but the village is, all home residents are still subject to the laws of the town of Orson.
Yeah.
President. Okay, um, so, so that was, I guess, the one note is that remember after the town adopted their local law with these, uh, regulations that the fines attached to it is specifically at the end were like $50 and $100 for the, for the first and second, uh, offense. That, as Ian just said, it might be a little bit light, uh, if you're riding an ATV, that's a cheap ticket to have a blast, um. You know, do we want to potentially adopt our own local laws, we can increase the, uh, fine amount if we run into that. Basically, it'd be like I said, a word for word adoption, uh, just with an increased fine amount. We can stew on it, maybe we want to stew on it and then we'll, okay, so then at the next meeting, we'll, we'll bring it back up, we'll table it for now and, uh, bring it back up the next. Okay. Um, so yeah, that was our, it's only discussion items for tonight. Um, Chief, what about your first review?
So yeah, in front of your motion, uh, accepting resignation, Ryan Bouye, back from May 12th, 2025.
It's. Motion. All in favor?
All in. And then there's another one authorizing you mayor to sign your memorandum agreement with the, with the association.
It's, uh, all in favor?
Um, then third, we have one for our cop who's downstairs, the lease is up on it. Um, actually, what it's costing us more money, this new one, less money, it's a 36 month lease, a hundred ninety-four. A dollar per month for a, uh, Chris Kelly office systems for a Sierra cop who machine.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. And then, uh, it's been, it's been extremely busy, uh, April, surprisingly, was. Promise of bringing, uh, April showers and May flowers, uh, did the opposite for, for me anyway, brought a lot of, uh, business in the sense of arrests we had. We had a couple of, uh, missing persons, they've been located, uh, safe and sound, we had, um, a number of arrests dealing with, um, criminal mischief, uh, endangering welfare of a child, um, which, uh, there was a couple of fights that led to a vehicle being stopped at a red light, people opening up the door and turning the light of the car off and then repeatedly punching the driver and then also smashing a window out. Um, all those subjects were located, arrested, some of the cap were, uh, protection were issued. They've all been, uh, identified, sentenced for prosecution. So, uh, we're waiting on that as well. Um, there were a couple of other, um, arrests. And we also have the backboard, the glass backboard down at the Run Road Park was smashed out, um, one of the, uh, backboards there.
So, yeah, so actually, I think there are, when they reinstall the backboards potentially, I, I don't know how we were going to prove it, but I think they did that report, um, to lose two backboards like that and, and then, I don't know who the second individual was, but, you know, knowing the first, it would be very unlikely that they did it on purpose.
Why is it, because often, why is it breaking? Why did we get a material that would be lead to shattered?
So those backboards are original to 2013, when they reinstalled those posts, they were system posts from years. Um, that's what they specked, uh, we found the original invoices for them, uh, when we went to replace it.
Oh, no.
They're, they're also the best backboard to, to, it's tempered glass.
Yeah, it's the best if you're sitting there, hitting, playing basketball, I know my, like, it, it's like a non-ful time, you know, shouldn't just shattered, that's also a highlight, right?
I, I, I don't disagree, I, but, you know, I think the intention was at the time, it was that those, that's what they used, this tempered glass in the MVA. Uh, that's what you could spec for, it's actually the same cost as a polycarbonate backboard. Um, I think the intention was good in 2013, because it was, you know, the best backboard you could get, the most professional. Um, and I think given the fact that both backboards have broken in the span of two to three months, likely when they reinstall them during the construction, uh, that there's torque spec. For when you, basically, it's a system that the rim, the backboard and the, the mount component have a through bolt that goes straight through it and just sandwiches together, and if it was potentially over torqued, basically, any movement from the board or whatever it be could shatter. I, I just think the commonality between these two happening for the first time in over a decade, there's a potential that's what it was. Um, to your point though, I think the second board is going to be a polycarbonate board, just so we're not dealing with this again. Um, I, I just don't, I, I'm, I would be nervous to say that it was ill intended, given the proximity, do you know?
We don't have, um, you know, definitive, uh, answer, we do, we do have three people that were seen, uh, and they have been identified and they are going to be, as a matter of routine, just questioned about, you know, what did you see, you were there.
Sure.
We didn't find any evidence of, uh, anything that would cause the damage.
Okay.
You know, close, in close proximity to where the damage had occurred, so.
Sure.
We're looking at it, um, at that, I, I always want to not to say that it can't happen, but I, I know these, uh, the three individuals and I would doubt that they were involved in it, but we'll see. You know, I've been proven wrong before. Um, and it could have been just an accident, you know, it could have been the basketball hitting the back, like you said, it's over torquing, hits and breaks. They didn't seem to be in any hurry to get out of there, so if somebody does something intentionally, you would think that they would run from the scene. The other thing is, you know, that, uh, we are hurting our manpower, just like every police agency in Ulster County and, uh, Douches County as well, and so, um, we've lost a couple of numerous part timers, uh, we had a chance to interview a couple of part timers tonight. Um, they withdrew at the last minute because they got jobs in Orange County who pays a substantial amount more for police service than, um, agencies up here. So, um, I do have one officer that is leaving, go to the sheriff's office in there in the future, I don't, this is a, I have another officer that's going to be out on extended medical, uh, for the summer. Um, and, uh, can bill afford to, to be shorthand as busy as that, as it has been, on short staff as we have members. Um, we do have one officer who's out on medical, hopefully coming back this week, we'll see how that, uh, turns out, so. Um, with that, um, I want to ask to, one of the SROs, um, Danielle Rodriguez, um, to, to be, uh, appointed full time, she's, um, working full time hours with part time, and that just can't be, so, um, we're going to ask that the board appoint her full time, along with, uh, the appointment of, uh, Michael Saint, who works for me part time. Um, he, uh, is going to replace Billy Ferrer, there's nobody additional, just going to replace those that need to be built. But I asked the board to move that. I'll move to, uh, both officers to. Effective. It'll be effective June 4th, or June 1st, rather, um, I'm sorry, June 1st.
Okay.
I'll second for discussion. Okay, so, so Chief, I just wanted clarity, clarity, you're saying she's going to replace Ferrer when he goes to?
Saint is going to replace Ferrer when he goes to the sheriff's office.
Okay, and we're, and Danielle, she's working.
She's just an SRO, yeah, she's been here for two years.
Yeah, yeah.
Working full time.
Yeah, so, so she's going, let's.
She's going back into the school.
Okay.
First of all. I don't mean that negatively, I mean, you know, she, she does a good job.
Yeah, yeah, she does well there.
A lot of the year there, you see people talk about it all the time, she does a great job.
Yeah.
And, and because of that, we'll see, perceive the offsetting, uh, revenue, increase in revenue.
Right.
Okay, so we will get the.
Yeah, yeah.
Full school.
And if that drives up, then that, they know it, they know that they will lose their position.
Yeah. Okay, uh, so I had a second with discussion, all in favor?
Aye. And we are getting, last week, we're getting ready for a run like the win, as Joe Stucker, Jim just said, uh, that's going to be Sunday. We have, uh, patrols, I don't think there's going to be a kids' race, right, not going to be a kids' race?
Formerly no, but we, we are prepared in case kids, uh, were, weren't able to get to the Elks Lodge last week. You'll come down, we are prepared, hopefully, in formal.
I mean, that's going to be run, that's going to be run simultaneously, if there is a kids' race, it will be run simultaneous, so we don't have to wait around for four to five hours. It'll decrease the number of hours for patrols that I have to, to establish for those traffic posts. I do have, uh, some volunteers, uh, coming, um, and we'll hope that the weather's good and all goes well down there for, for Sunday. Just like to point out that, you know, when we consider these races and events, it is a hardship on some of the churches, um, you hear about that, so, they want to consider that in the future when we're talking about these races, maybe this Saturday, um, to avoid any conflicts with the, the local version. And then after that, tomorrow, we're going to be talking about the Younger meeting with the fire department, we have the Ulster County Volunteers Fireman Parade coming up on July 27th, I believe.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. The Borscht Belt Festival will be the very next day, on July 27th, that is going to be an expensive weekend work, the build, but well worth it, a lot of people will be here. Just be aware that that's coming up, and also the July 4th parade is coming up, uh, with the fireworks, um, another space, and then two weeks after the, uh, the Borscht Belt and, um, the Fireman's Parade wraps up, we go right into the Blueberry Festival.
Okay, thanks Chief, appreciate it. Um, EJ, just, uh, can we move on to each other, do you want to?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, if my conversation with Lee, asked him, are you looking to block the street, and he said no, so if they're just going to be on the grasses, huh, they're just going to be in the sidewalk, because they're just going to be in the triangle. Public property, they don't need anything. He said, well, I don't think we're going to block the street, I said, well, I would suggest you don't block the street.
Yeah.
Had, did they express it, if they want to use the portico or not, or they just moved on, Ben, there's a sample?
He didn't mention that, I just said, you know, you go, whatever you're going to do, carry signs, you know, don't block pedestrian traffic.
Isn't that move to be like the other?
Yeah, just a general public assembly, that they're going to.
Public property, so.
Okay. Um, thanks, EJ, for the update, um.
Your Honor, did you want to do, um, motion?
Uh, no, I, yeah, because they're not intending to use the portico, yeah, I think it's just, you know, again, they're demonstrating, it's, you know, they're right to do so peacefully. Um, but thank you, Michelle. Um, okay, uh, so we'll jump ahead, nothing on sewer, nothing on street water, no, I want to thank, uh, all of our department heads and their staff uh, for banding together last week to, uh, try to make that access road over to the air swell work, even though the rain made that effectively impossible right now, uh, so I know the other two aren't here, but Mike, thank you for, you know, having your guys jump in and help out, um, which leads into, I'll, I'll throw this in on the water report, so unfortunately, we weren't able to start the air swell refurb today. Uh, the rain has made it basically impossible to get a very large crane truck down a very wooded, uh, I want to call it an access road, an access path to the well. Um, it's basically a marshland right now, uh, departments basically were on the material to try to solidify some of that ground, but it's basically muck and quicksand underneath it, they're just going to need to dry it out, um, and we'll just play it by ear right now. Okay, so with that, uh, I have a motion authorizing expenditure of $4,105. Yes. Parts upon recommendation of the Department of Department. All in favor? I have a motion authorizing expenditure of $6,349.67 to just right mechanical systems, uh, for repairs to the Westwood House upon the recommendation of the Department of Department.
All in.
And, all in favor? Okay, uh, Dan, um, so we have mobile home discussion.
Yeah.
Sent you all an email concerning the state law designating mobile homes, the single family homes.
Well, specifically manufactured homes.
Manufactured homes, yes, anything after 1975 was actually considered manufactured home. Um, the advantage that we would have as far as altering the zoning law, banning mobile homes, is that we can control, and I talked to Ian about this, we can control what kind of mobile homes and how old they are. In other words, the, the law specifically states that it has to fit in with the neighborhood. Now, there's no 16 inch, 16 foot wide homes in any neighborhood, so we can require them to be double wides. The mobile home, manufactured homes after 2015, all meet the today's current energy codes. They don't have to, but that's what, that's what HUD is, has required, so the, if we restrict them to like a manufacturing date of 2020, make them double wide homes, they have to go with the same, uh, standards as, as the neighborhoods. But the law that we have banning them, because they are considered single family homes, you can't say, this is a single family home, it's not allowed.
So are you asking us to remove the ban to mobile homes or you're just asking?
I'm just pointing out that state law requires us to remove it.
So you want us to change the language?
Well, we, we have to come into compliance with the state law. That's my understanding of it.
So what I'm, I guess I'm not getting what you're saying.
Yeah. I, you're saying that the state law prohibits us from banning mobile homes in the village?
Yeah.
Manufactured.
Manufactured homes. Now that I sent you the email with the law, it, uh, basically what it states is identical development specifications and standards. In access building. Setback distances, enclosures, vehicle parking. They also have to be on a fixed foundation, whether it's a slab or a basement foundation, but they, they. Technically, it's illegal to ban people, somebody, if somebody who wants to put a mobile home on a vacant bar. They, if they're doing a double wide and it's compliant with the area, technically we have to allow it. I've had two calls of people wanting to go into mobile homes. And that's what brought this up, uh, to begin with. The, that's just what the state law is now. A mobile home is considered a single family home. Any, any residential district that allows single family homes must allow manufactured home as well. But it has to fit within the standards and the requirements of the village.
So I just want to make sure that, that I'm hearing you correct also. So, so mobile homes, you're saying are the same as a. Manufacture. And it's not.
And any, any manufactured home, I believe it's after nineteen seventy five, any prior to nineteen seventy five, they were called mobile homes. After that, they were called manufactured home.
Okay.
Manufacturing homes have a lower standard than standard stick built construction does. And their standard is based on HUD requirements. So the HUD requirements. Overrules state requirements. In other words, they have a twenty pound snow load as opposed to a fifty pound snow load. All right. But they're going by ground snow load as opposed to a dead roof looks of snow load. So it's. An engineering thing as far as the HUD is concerned. Um, the ability to restrict what kind of mobile homes and how old they are. I don't know if you have ever seen what a current mobile home looks like, but they are gorgeous. They're built with two by six construction. They have four, R forty nine in the ceiling. They have R twenty three in the walls.
Yeah.
And they meet all energy codes. So there's really no reason why we should ban them. But legally, we are not able to.
Yeah. Uh, I, 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 you know, again, I think state want to do a little more research on this.
Okay.
Reach out to some of our, you know, I know me and look into, maybe you can reach out to NITE, um, just to see if they have a little broader view of what other municipalities are doing. Or if anything, um. Yeah, it's just, again.
All right.
There's, there's always, there's always interpretation to what is standard, what is, you know. Thing of the neighborhood and there's a lot of, I don't want to open up a plug game here, that only gate might be already open and then we don't have a chance.
This did come up when I was in the Village of Liberty.
Sure.
And I did talk to, uh, Beltran Wolf.
Uh.
Wait, wait, where you go to?
Isn't that, we couldn't officially ban them, but isn't that why we, we through like the zoning saying that you cannot place the home there? Where that's like the curve ball getting around and saying you cannot build a mobile home, but in this zoning, you're not, you cannot build.
Well, the thing is, the distinction is a single family home as opposed to.
I mean, like to regulate placement of the home.
Well, if, if, if the zoning district allows a single family home and the state recognizes a manufactured home as a single family home. How can you say one is good and one is not?
I mean, say a lot of things.
Yeah, I know.
Do it. Uh, I, I, again, I think, you know. With this information, Dan, I think we just probably want a little more time to.
Yeah, no problem. I'm not saying that we should allow it right away.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I just needed to bring it to your attention. It's, uh. One was brought to me.
Yeah. I, you know, I, I, I think, you know, right through some guys, you know, probably Sam, Deputy America can speak to better than I, you know, like in any community and especially in Allenville where. Uh, there was kind of like a Wild West period of the lack of building standards and whatever it be in the nineteen seventies and eighties and. We have a legacy of these mishmash of different things and still kind of pay for it years later.
Believe me, I see it.
I know. Exactly. It's, you know, again. Uh, yeah, I think there's just a lot to think about and try to see.
Oh, no, there's definitely a lot to, and you're right. We have to contact NITE for the exact definition of what the restrictions would be if we have to do that.
Yeah. Because that's what I want to know, what we could do in regulations of zoning and what language can be, may, maybe we can't prohibitive per se. Those exact words, but there's what regulations does if we get it where we can have it only in certain areas if we allow that.
Yeah. But again, like, like what the law is stating is if the zoning district allows single family homes. Manufactured homes are considered by the state now as single family homes. So you can't, you can't really distinguish one over the other. That's what they're, that's what the intent of the law was from what I understand.
Yeah, I gotta look that.
Yeah.
Just issue contact Planner Doyle, Dennis. It's, not, the specific question has come up, but question in general around housing and provision. Where things can go when they can. He's very much first because we have this mission right now is additional housing. So please reach out to him if he's.
But what's your definition between a mobile home and a modular? They're one, the same.
No, well, the difference between a mobile home and a modular home is a modular home is delivered and placed on a.
But it's still, it's still kind of wheels attached in the base.
But it doesn't have a chassis.
Yes, it does.
No, not a chassis physically attached to own, on a manufactured home.
There's one, there's chapels where the wheels are still attached, so is the apron.
That's.
How, where, where has that, uh?
On chapels?
What's the beige one, the second one in, right?
Which one now?
The second one in, right next to your property.
On rear chapel? Rear chapel.
You got the corner house, the beige one is here and then the second one in, it, it still has it.
That was, uh, weren't they, uh, habitat for humanity to?
That's what I'm trying, what's your, what's your definition between the two? Because you're saying mobile home, manufacturer homes, basically one or the same.
So manufactured, yeah, they are.
Well, I can go take modular and manufacturer home or mobile home and set it on my property, take the frame off and say, we're back to square one.
Yeah. So, so, and, and we're getting a little muddy. I mean, so modular by definition is functionally a stick built home that is transported in. Basically depending on how.
Well, that's what he's saying. It's a mobile home. It's the same thing. It's being transported in either direction.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but if the nature.
Being transported on a freight.
But it is, it's the nature of the construction which is different, which is why the state has tried to clarify. So a modular home. As, I can point out a couple of them specifically.
But what, then the other part of my question is, why am I being regulated for a double wide mobile home versus a single wide, single built eighteen foot?
I'm, again.
Doesn't match the state code. The sixteen foot stick built home doesn't match state code, wouldn't fit the, uh, square footage requirements for a lot of, a lot of reasons.
There's a lot of smaller homes in this area that are fifteen and eighteen foot wide.
How old are they?
They're old.
Again, I, there's a lot to.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely a lot that you want.
And. Work. Okay. Thanks, Dan. Appreciate that.
The other thing, uh. The workshop for May nineteenth.
Yeah.
I'd like to adjourn that, uh. Give the date to, uh. Tracy.
Yeah.
The new day.
Yeah. So, uh, I, so I, I think we should discuss it in an open session because I mean, at the end of the day, it's really. If you can make it and we can make it, I think you said the second of June.
Well, any, any weekend in June is, any weekday in June, Monday in June is fine with my schedule.
The, the, the reason that the weekend wasn't good is because some people still being shattered.
Right, right.
They actually can't come on Saturday or Friday. No, to that.
No, the, the problem and the reason that I had to change it was because I was going on vacation. I didn't have time to not only write the letter. But I didn't have time to research all the addresses. There are four hundred and fifty nine addresses that I got mailed to.
So, so, so we'll, I, I would prefer if it's on a Wednesday midweek.
However you want to prefer it, that's fine.
You'd rather have.
Is, is June fourth viable for you?
Yeah.
Everybody else here. I know, you know, again, if we're gonna have at least three more members that we're gonna have to have a, a, a trip. Well, okay. You, would you like to be here for it?
If I can, but if I don't, I'll get filled in by Dan.
I think June fourth or the eleventh, I mean, one day was.
Okay. Let's, let's shoot for June fourth.
Okay.
This way you don't get.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put the letter together tomorrow instead of, uh, I, I've been doing the grass violation, which.
Okay.
Uh, I do need to talk about it as well.
All right. Well, then I'll make a motion to cancel the workshop scheduled for May nineteenth of twenty twenty five. Uh, and have that rescheduled for June fourth of twenty twenty five at five P M.
Five P M, yes.
Uh, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, okay. Thanks, Dan.
Okay. The lawn discussion that I wanted to add.
Yeah.
Um. I don't know if you've noticed, but this year, for example, there's been an unreusable amount of lawns. I've only done half the village and I haven't even scratched the surface yet.
Well, it, it's probably, I mean, they got off of raining.
Yeah, no, I understand. And so the letter, I gotta give them fifteen days before we do it.
Yeah.
The question is, do we want to take the time from the street department to do these or do we look at possibly taking bids and hiring some local contractors to do this?
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with that. I mean, it's expensive to have us do it.
Well, the advantage is we're, we're thinking more two hundred and fifty dollars per lawn and they're not going to charge us anywhere near that for a lawn.
Yeah. Well, that's.
Well.
Well, I get some high bids. And in all fairness. Being against most lawns.
Yeah.
Uh, some of the laws we're talking and speaking about as I go around, like the. Summer ice cream shop. It hasn't been mowed at all. And so it's not like.
Yeah, I agree.
It's been wet, it's been warm. That's nonsense. They just had, people have mowed it. Yeah. So.
We got guys, and I know you do it, but I guess you're being recused, recused from this. But you got Erica Abraham, you got Sandy, uh, and I'm sure there's other contractors inside the village.
Sure.
Uh, who would be able to help us out with this.
Yeah.
However you want to do it, whether we take bids or just give it to certain.
And the chances are as soon as they get the letter, they'll go, yeah. What I, what I would like, what I would like to see happen is it's the same cast of characters. Year in, year out, all year long. So I guarantee you. When the ice cream place gets mowed or I know a small synagogue got, got mowed today in a month. You're gonna get, they're gonna get another letter because they're not gonna do it. And I do half of it because I happen to be a church. And, uh, so I, my suggestion is as we write it up. We should, you get a letter the first time around. After that, you get a ticket.
No, I, I don't agree with the ticket. This is.
No, 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 no. But I'm saying.
A ticket will require a fine.
No, no, no. My point is. So you, you come to twenty eight lab because I haven't mowed my lawn all year. You send me a letter. Good. I mowed. Now, in a month, you send me another letter. I have, now I go mow it tough. I think the second time around, you get a ticket.
That's what I, that's what I also wanted.
We need to do that.
Don't want to have to send multiple letters to the same address.
Cause we all know the players.
Violation, they're in violation. They, after the first letter, they know they're in violation. The only lawns that should, the only places that should get a second letter, not even a second letter, but. A repeated. Repeated violation should not get the benefit of the doubt the second time around. That's basically, I think what you're saying. I agree.
Absolutely.
I understood. Okay. So you're saying they'll get a warning functionally the first time.
Right.
And then they, if they do not comply, they would see that. Yeah. And then the second time, the third.
Yep. Twenty seven canals are perfect. Exactly. They got it twice last year and they still have, are out of control.
No, no. Like Sam, Sam, it's not, it rains in four days, they didn't mow it. And these, I tell you, I can drive you around the village. These places haven't been mowed all of this year.
Well, but what's the Webster Bank?
Bank.
Webster Bank. Webster Bank. That was like that before I went on vacation. It's still like it.
Yeah.
And that was before the rains. Yep.
They, they, they may not have all this shit.
Yeah. I mean, so there's, so there's a couple of items being brought up right now. So to jump back to the concept of potentially having a contractor do this for us. For us then, um, I'm certainly not against it. We need to issue an RFP for, um, so we need to put something together and put it out there, make it transparent, make sure. We have a lot of local.
We have a lot of local guys who can help us out with this.
And again, preference to hopefully someone who's based in the village of Allenville.
I, but let's ask, let's ask Mike if he thinks he can do it. I mean, it would generate a lot, a lot of revenue for the village.
I, you know, I, I, I think he could. I just, I think with so many other things that they have the capacity and capability to do, I think it is a good point that like. You know, a, a lawn service company can't pave our streets, but Mike with the paper can. And anytime that they're not doing those kinds of tasks that they have, need skill sets to do. We are, it's, it's an opportunity cost.
So they had, they had last year. They were so busy last year that they were barely able to do the lawns.
Yeah.
And that was the problem. That's why I was thinking this would be a good idea. I want to take the pressure off the street department. And basically this is not going to cost the village anything. So I think it's a good way to handle the violations.
And, and several years ago, it's gone back years, but, uh, we did do that. We asked for, um, companies, local companies that. Who would, uh, would give us a proposal and, uh, we did have, you know, several interested, uh, companies that, that did do a few ones. Um, you know, when Michael in the street department was, uh, was not able to do it. So, yeah.
All right.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. All right. Uh, I'll fit together an RFP, uh, maybe for the next meeting and we can look at issuing it. Uh. Obviously it's going to take time.
No, I gotta, I gotta write the letters and right now I'm at fifty homes plus. Uh, so I gotta send those out. They're gonna have a fifteen day notice. I'm gonna get the rest of the village, uh, tomorrow. So everybody again, a notice going out tomorrow, Wednesday, and from that date it will be fifteen days. That covers the next meeting, I think.
Okay. I know, Dan, but anything like this and, you know. Pursue the most egregious first and work your way down.
I know.
I want to, want to make sure people have ample time, especially again, because of the time of the year, uh, you know.
You're being too nice.
Well, that's.
No, you're just, I.
Our lawns are out of control, I assure you.
You're just gonna mow the lawn.
Here, I, I, I don't disagree. The most egregious, right? The most egregious are certainly not mowing the lawn, but then there's people who. Just have worked for a couple of days and it downpour for a week and then the sun came out, set shine.
No, those, those lawns are not.
I, I, I trust Dan to, you know, been working through the most egregious for a second.
All right, Dan.
Okay. Um, treasurer's report, uh, so. Uh, we have the M and T commercial credit card, uh, basically to open it. That's a people, I know we discussed it at the previous.
Right.
Um, meeting, uh, this would effectively what I'd like to do is over a six month period, basically move everything over to this account and then. Or maybe select airline miles, credit card.
Then nobody can use them.
So it's gonna ask that it's deferred to cash back? It does. It provides a rebate. So it's, it's direct cash back instead of an arbitrary, uh, one of the, apparently, right? Hit the entire village on vacation. Okay.
You just switch our, I put up to a higher yield with us, corporate card.
Okay.
American Express. It was a higher percentage. Some purchases go as much as five percent, nine five, three nine, one percent.
Yeah. Yeah. And for anybody who was in here, we had an issue with our card. Uh, this is going to be through, potentially through M and T bank. We have a banking relationship with, so if we run into an issue. We actually can walk over, have a conversation. Okay. Uh, so motion to enter into, uh, commercial credit card group with M and T bank. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the motion and so just to clarify before we do this motion, uh, trustee ninety is in here, trustee Ellis, on this, you cannot vote for it. We were, uh, relayed by, by slurs just simply because it's, not that it's a benefit, it's simply, you know, it never a base.
Well, yeah, it has a cost.
Yeah. So that, that's the only thing. So a motion adopting a standard workday for trustee ninety and, uh, trustee Ellis, come on RS twenty four seventeen A as provided by Niceland.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh. Say it again.
Extension.
Uh, yeah. Oh, and then extension.
Sorry.
Uh, motion authorizing mayor to sign memorandum of agreement with local seven fifty dash seven, county sixty six, white collar unit.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Uh, motion authorizing mayor to sign the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six tax warrant. Second.
Discussion.
For discussion? Okay. For discussion, anybody?
No.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Michelle, thank you. Thank you to the whole office, uh, for, you know, I think getting everything ready. It's a race, uh, this time of year to get that right and get it accurate. Um, again. This is an important step. Um, again, this is an important step, uh, you know, they roll over water and sewer, which is a big job in itself. Yeah, so thank you, thank you for working on that. Um, okay, uh, Ian, anything coming up?
No.
Okay.
I think we're all good, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, okay. So, uh, the next motion I'm gonna ask for, as we've kind of gone through, we have the second and the fourth floors. Uh, this is the flush valves. Uh, it's actually also the P traps on a number of the toilets too. Couple of them are quite rotten through. One has an actual hole in it. Um, this is to redo all the flush valves on all the toilets on both of those floors so that we don't have an issue like we did a couple of years ago. Yeah, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, and we have received another bid uh from a local plumbing company which was hired. Um, a motion authorizing an expenditure of two thousand one hundred and twenty one dollars uh to site one uh in miscellaneous uh golf course equipment amenities. Uh, the expenditure will be paid from the Joseph's Tech Memorial and Golf Course Account. That's all in favor?
Aye.
All in.
Aye.
Uh, a motion authorizing expenditure of eight thousand one uh one hundred and sixteen dollars and five cents to advance curb solutions for fertilizer at Joseph's Tech Memorial Park Golf Course. Expenditure will be paid from Joseph's Tech Memorial account, uh, Memorial, uh, Park and Golf Course Account.
All in.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, the bridge, what is the update on the equator bridge? I know we're waiting for a study to be done. I just wanna know where are we at with with the net so we can notify the resident.
Yeah.
Ahead of time, not two weeks before.
No, absolutely. So, uh, speaking of, uh, so one of the items we ran into was the finishing up the right of way agreements and uh doing some supplemental work. Uh, we need to enter into a supplemental agreement. Uh, we need to start with U D S with some accessory uh agencies, they have just finalized that proposal. Uh, we've been in communication with Ulster County, uh, uh, trans uh Ulster County Transportation to update the tip. Uh, this funds will ultimately be again ninety percent full, uh, ninety ninety, yeah, I think it's, no, I think a little bit. Our our local portion of the updated amount, which will be eighty nine thousand dollars, will be five percent at the completion of the project.
Also, we only have to do five percent.
Yeah, of the total project, we pay five percent.
Okay. And so there is no update. We aren't slow shooting for the other time.
Uh, I I would say right now it would be fall. I think it's gonna be fall to try to get this through. Uh, once this supplemental is done with, gonna push through, it's gonna be tight. I'm, I I I've communicated, I think, as we've all discussed, that if we can get it done this year, no matter when it is, we need to deal with that bridge and the walkway situation coming over. You know, ideally, it would have been in the middle of the summer when school's out because you're not dealing with that aspect, but it just has to get done. I mean, there's.
Yeah, but it doesn't make a difference for the school because they're going up and down Chapel down to where it's in there.
Yeah, and and so that's why, again, ideally, if it could have happened in the summer and it was lining up to be that way, we would have done it that way, but it's not going to and we'd rather just getting done.
Yeah, but this has been put off, put off, put off, put off. And, you know, it's enough to stop, just do it.
Yeah, and that's that's.
Because I've been here since nineteen ninety three.
A year ago, but I I totally agree.
And every year that you put it off, it's gonna raise our taxes.
Yeah, so I just wanna, I wanna be clear, we're not putting it off.
Yeah.
You know, they have to go through their process.
But the process was started nineteen ninety three with twenty twenty.
Listen, I I I remember sitting at a meeting in twenty twenty and, you know, it sounded like it was a year away and then COVID happened.
Meanwhile, the cost keeps going.
Yeah.
And it's gonna fall back to the last one.
But it was, what to be clear, it's not us. It's the first one, we applied for the grant. We had to have someone come look at it. They had to do all the process, but I know I I I keep hearing like it was supposed to happen early before probably the first before, but, um.
Well, maybe when you.
You know, but but to your point, what we can do and what we've been doing, certainly at least for the last year, is making sure.
But meanwhile, we expect how much time going over there, trying to put a sidewalk in, put a curbs extender on.
Yeah, yeah.
Now you want, and then there was talk of traffic lights being put in, another expense that we don't need. And ninety eight percent of the people walking across that bridge do not use the crosswalk.
Yeah.
That you have designated and and it's.
But so Doug, just to clarify, we have to do that. We we do not have a choice on that. The bridge, as you know, was red flagged and we have to do those things for the Department of Transportation. Again, we would prefer that. We never had to do those things because then the bridge would have ever been placed. Totally get the frustration. What we can do is continue to borderline harass our engineering firm, borderline harass the Department of Transportation to say, is this really an issue? Can we push through this? I get it. And that's what we're working towards. So this finally gets done. Uh, because it is a difficult.
I'll be better retired before that.
Don't.
Doug, I hope not. I hope that's not since month from now. Yeah, I mean.
Don't, don't.
I'd say a check or retire.
Okay, uh, well, retirement, you can speed that up, you know. Anyways, um.
Okay.
Okay.
So that was my question because people are asking too, yeah.
Yeah, no, I guess.
And I was like, I under the impression we were starting in the summer because we talked about this like a couple of months ago that that was.
That's where it was tracking into summer and.
Now it's.
Um, okay, uh, so anything to work for, uh, just a reminder, our next meeting will be the twenty seventh Tuesday. Monday is Memorial Day, twenty sixth, so twenty seventh is our next meeting. Okay, thank you, sir.
Are you done?
Yeah. Oh, did we not, did I not motion for that?
We did.
We did.
Yeah. No, maybe we did. Let's just read, yeah, you're right.
Read resolutions, I'll move it.
Okay, uh.
Which one?
Yeah, where's my?
I'm right now it's two.
There's two final.
On the back.
He said that.
Yeah, yeah.
For the, for the land lease and then eight thousand.
No, 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 there's, it's for the lease.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see. We can see that.
Um, so, uh, it's the motion to authorize myself uh to enter into the golf course restaurant lease agreement which makes full fire uh and the Village of Allenville contingent on uh receiving the first check.
I.
All in favor, uh, for discussion?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
TJ.
Can I, I I.
I can be the tiebreaker or I can be the.
I'm I'm I'll move it, but I'll leave it when I see it.
I love you.
Like, no, no.
Okay, so you voted yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm. Okay, so yes, yes, and. Okay, um.
Contingent on the first check.
Correct. Right, we'll not sign it.
Okay. Okay.
As per anything, please, if we can get them.
Maybe we'll be lucky, another check will fall out of the sky.
Um, so with that, uh, I'm willing to uh enter into executive session to discuss a contractual matter. Actually, contractual and personnel, uh, not totally.
So I'll I'll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks everybody for coming out.
What's up with your neighbor?